Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed quick knowledge and permissible. And we open the meeting of the Planning Board on July 16th. We have item number one, which is a repetitive petition. The owner applicants S. Beacon Development Trust. Location on Evelyn's Way, Griffin Street, Nash Street, assesses lot G-27-1. I'm going to read all of this.
I can, or you can?
I can, sure.
Okay, it's for the public here, to open up public hearing.
Sure. Request submitted by the S. I.T.E.C. Incorporated on behalf of Contractors Landing under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 16, and under Section 86-487 of the zoning bylaws with respect to a special permit request, which was denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals on October 18th, 2018, to construct four duplexes in a commercial mill district. The current request is for determination by the Planning Board that the applicant's new proposal reflects specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the denial was issued, and for consent of the Planning Board to allow a new hearing by the Zoning Board of Appeals prior to the expiration of two years after the date of the denial.
That was well said, I have nothing to add.
Oh, all done.
For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the chairwoman stated, we are here with regards to a repetitive petition, which some of you, I'm sure, are very familiar with, some of you may not be. In general, what it comes down to is, the Zoning Board of Appeals, when they make a determination whether for a variance or a special permit, if you are denied, the applicant can't go back before them for a two-year period unless they come up with, unless the developer comes up with a project that's different enough to warrant going back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. But the way that the state law is, that process is twofold. First, we have to come to the Planning Board, so the Planning Board is supposed to feel it out and make the determination, yes, it's substantially different than what was approved. You're not making a determination whether you think it's a good idea, or whether it should get approved at the Zoning Board of Appeals. The narrow scope is, this is what was denied, this is what's in front of us, is it a substantial difference? That's the only determination that you have to make. So I'll give you a little bit of a presentation of what was denied, and then what we're doing that we think is a little bit different. So, as was stated in the previous reading, there was an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals that was denied back in October. Different owner, different property owner, different engineer, I was not involved in it at the time, but same parcel of land. So, for orientation purposes, this is a parcel of land that is located at the end of the cul-de-sac of what's called Evelyn's Way. It's a residential subdivision that I actually permitted probably 10 or 11 years ago. In an industrial zoned area, we were obtained a variance to build, I think, 20 or 22 single-family homes on that street. So that street comes down, and then there's a terminus of a cul-de-sac. The previous owner went before the Zoning Board of Appeals and proposed the construction of four townhouse units, so a total of eight units, so four two-family dwellings that ran along this paper portion of what's Griffin Street. We've got an intersection of a few different streets, but Griffin is the only portion that's approved. And at that time, the Zoning Board of Appeals made the determination that, when looking at the surrounding areas and what's allowed by right in this district, which is now a commercial mill district, which allows all kinds of commercial development, they felt that two-family dwellings was more detrimental than what commercial use could be allowed there. So, once that was denied, this owner sold the piece of land to my client, Contractors Landing, who was the owner of the petition before you. And knowing that it was denied for that residential purpose of two-family dwellings, you know, the townhouse styles, he asked me to put together a commercial development for the site that was allowed by zoning, 100% by right, no variances, nothing. So we put together a proposal to build what was called like a contractor condo. So it was a series of 10 units with a garage and a little office space that created a building here and a parking area in the front. So if you had like an electrician or a plumber, or somebody that needed a little bit of office space and a little bit of garage space, they could either purchase a unit or rent a unit and have somewhere to call home, not needing to have their own facility somewhere. So we put together that petition, again, that was in compliance with the zoning bylaw, and we went to the Conservation Commission to begin the permitting of that, because we do have a bordering vegetated wetland to ourself. During that process, the abutter notification, similar to what we have for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, the neighbors spoke at that meeting and what appeared to be, I won't say a disdain, but for what we were proposing, they didn't want. They would rather have had some type of residential development, and I don't want to speak to them, because they'll all speak, but at least that's what I heard at that meeting. So after that meeting, and again, our project is perfectly permissible, but for the time being, we've asked the Conservation Commission to put that on hold, to see if we can put something together that makes everybody happy. So I went and spoke with the developer after that meeting, and I said, listen, is there any way that you could potentially do something here that would make the neighbors happier? They're probably never going to be happy, because nobody wants anything built in their backyard, I don't either, but that's what happens. So we went back and forth, he told me what he would need in order to make it financially feasible, and that came out to be five single-family homes. Not duplexes, five single-family homes. So I put together a plan that at the end of this Evelyn's Way, we would come onto our property with our common driveway system, off-street parking, have two spaces for each unit, and then construct five single-family homes. This project shrunk our footprint down from the commercial development, so that would make the Conservation Commission very happy, because we were able to pull a bunch of work away from the wetlands and actually out of the wetlands. And the density with what we see here of five single-family homes on 43,000 square feet is compared to the density of what these single-family homes are mostly on 5,000 square feet for one home. So this is actually spread out over a larger area than what this development was. So I don't know if any of the abutters saw this out of what we've recently submitted, but what the process would be is that if this board determined that these five single-family homes is substantially different than for two-family homes, then we need to go to the next step, which is to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals. They'll make the determination whether or not a special permit can be granted or not. Once we get there, they may say, nope, go ahead with the commercial development, which the neighbors won't be happy with, so I'm hoping that they'll go to the Zoning Board of Appeals if we go that route and support this project. But that's generally the main difference in the two proposals. One was for four two-family homes in an area that was all single-family homes, and now we're proposing this five single-family homes on a larger parcel than the entire development to our north. And that's all. So you just have to make the determination whether or not you feel this plan is substantially different for the reasons that it was denied. Doesn't have to be substantive, it could actually be the same structure, but it's the reason that it was denied the first time. So you don't have to look at all kinds of different things, but that's what you're warranted with today. If you have any questions regarding the specifics of either plan, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
The single five, what is actually square footage, whatever, single people on to it? Can you define the house, for example, a single?
Yes, so each home would be 30 feet wide by 32 feet deep, which is about the same size as just about every house in that subdivision coming down. They were generally 30 by 30s, 30 by 32s. They were developed by Tim Cabral, and I did that for him probably about 10 or 11 years ago.
And each one of them will have off-street parking?
They will each have two off-street parking spaces for each building. And another large difference from this plan to the last one, our driveway system, we've put on our own lot. The previous application, because they were also providing off-street parking, they were going to put the driveway on the paper street of Griffin. So this will actually also push that away, the driveway away from that residential development. So there'll be an area for each home that has two parking spaces and then a 22-foot wide driveway. So let's say if this person, for instance, they had two people here and they want, they were having company of one or two people, there is actually room for them to park within the driveway, the same way these homes park on the street itself. So we, you could provide additional spaces, but by zoning, we're required to provide two off-street parking spaces for each single-family home. And then they could also, again, park additional vehicles on the driveway system itself, if they have had company or parties or things of that nature.
Thank you.
What's the buffer between the property line and the wetlands?
This is the bordering vegetated wetland here. See the shaded area there?
Yeah, the whole, what's the footage between the property line and the wetlands?
Dan, I think you need to explain to them that this is not going to be property line, it's going to be a condo?
Well, yes, again, well, it might not be the question that you're asking, but...
The form of ownership.
The form of ownership of this will be owned by a homeowners association, and each one of these homes will be part of it. Each one will have an exclusive use area around it that only they can use, but the driveway, the storm drainage system, and the whole parcel will actually be owned by a homeowners association, like a condominium. But if the question you're asking is, here is the wetlands line, here is our property line, now, okay, so this is what we own. So I'm not sure which question you're asking me as far as property line to wetlands.
I thought the property line, I have to look up, I thought there was like a buffer between the property line and the wetlands.
No, the wetlands are here, up onto our property, and that's the way that it's been even on our commercial development. There is a 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland, and that's Conservation Commission jurisdiction. That's why we're in front of them on the commercial development, because anything that we construct is going to fall within that buffer zone and will need to appear before the Conservation Commission. And they look at things like buffer to wetlands, drainage design, things of that.
I know, I've been with them.
Okay.
Now, the reason that it was denied before was because they were duplexes instead of single-family homes?
Well, it was never proposed as a single-family home, but I'll read you the actual denial. "The board found that the petitioner had not produced sufficient evidence to meet the prerequisites for the granting of a special permit. More particularly, the board found that the proposed use is less appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use," which is a little bit, there was no existing use to it, so I'm not sure how that was written, but that's basically what they gave as a response. Because what happens is, under the special permit in zoning, when you have a commercially-zoned area, you can, one, you can seek out a variance to build single-family homes, which is what we did here. A variance is much more difficult to obtain than a special permit, because you need to show hardship due to soil conditions, topography, things of that nature. A special permit is just viewed as, and it's, again, two families, and I think threes are allowed in this commercial mill district by special permit, and you're supposed to just explain or make the determination that the two-family use is less detrimental than what a commercial use could be. Well, I think everyone has seen by what we've just proposed as a commercial development that that's not the case. So, would I, do I think two-family dwellings are less detrimental than the commercial development that we're proposing? Absolutely. But it wasn't presented that way to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the time. It was presented rather generically, without explanation of what could be done there, and I don't think the neighbors understood what could potentially be done there. But, we can't go back to the two families, because I can't come before you and say, well, listen, I know it's been less than two years, but we want to go back to the four two-families. You can't make that determination, you don't have the ability to. So we need to come back to you to create some kind of residential development that we can say is substantially different than the one that was denied. So the problem is, we've got three different boards, three different sets of regulations, and neighbors trying to figure out what to do with this piece of land. Something is going to happen there. And it's my assertion that five single-family homes would be the lesser of the three different options that everyone's discussed.
Do any board members have any other questions?
Unsatisfied.
Does anyone from the public have any questions?
I do.
Please come forward, give your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Demora, 35, Evelyn's Way. I was here for the last meeting, which he was present, and I was also here for the first one, which got denied from the separate contractor. The first, the first one for the denial, basically, our understanding as neighbors and neighbors say is, basically it was denied because of the safety issues and the traffic issues. We didn't have a problem of their building, whether it's five single homes or whatever, it was the access to Evelyn's Way, and at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a lot of children, and also the cars that we have, most people have two to four cars per family. So it's not just two cars on the driveway, it's three to four cars, and then when you have people over, and also, we also have some people with health issues, for ambulances to get in, it just so happens, one is at the end near the cul-de-sac. So by doing, using Evelyn's Way, like he did say, they were going to put it inside here, but by doing it this way to the new plan, it's still a hazard to the end here of the cul-de-sac and where the children play and safety of the traffic flow. We didn't have a problem with anything that they wanted to do, as far as I can speak for, they can speak for themselves, it was Evelyn's Way. That's the whole issue of why it got denied, because they determined the safety and the children and all that we proposed, the traffic of coming down, then now it became like a wetlands issue. So my other question, whether it's these things or anything, is, do you have proper drainage for overflow and water flow and stormage? Because there was an issue down here, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, John can speak of that, there was an overflow of storage or something overflowing, the stench was so bad, you couldn't even go outside our homes. So there was something backing up in there, I don't know if you're aware of it, John can speak more of that. So I wanted to know, no matter what you want to do, because we're all trying to be happy and solve it, we'd be happy with Griffin, we'd be happy with Ash, we don't have a problem. But the safety concerns will still be there, and now I understand what you're saying, is I'm not sure like you had, the footage, what is the footage of the, right here, of the driveway tar or whatever you're talking about in front of these homes to park and to come through? How much of this, of this are you going to use, the whole thing? Or you just, you know what I'm saying?
No, it's just, it's drawn right there. We have, we have a 22...
Oh, I see it right here, here it is, right, is that it? Yeah, I can't see that.
We're going to have a 22-foot driveway coming off of that.
Okay, well, yeah, you didn't mention that, so 22 feet, so, and, and so, the rest of this will still remain cul-de-sac, is that what you're saying?
Just the way that it is, yeah.
So that, okay, just to make, you know, everybody can understand. So how much of this is just like, how much is the houses, how much is this?
That would be, let's see, a 22-foot wide driveway and 18-foot wide parking space...
But when you come through here, how far...
Can I answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
A 22-foot wide driveway and 18-foot parking space, that totals 40 feet, plus I think there's about a five-foot buffer. So about 40 to 45 feet for the four buildings to the right, and then the one to the left, you'll see there's a dimension there now already to the paper street, which I, I can't read it, but does it say 30 feet? 30 feet to the paper street, this is the pavement out here, so probably 40 feet to the paper.
And then where is this, like, are you going to have the excess run off the stormwater stuff? Do you have something like that, a container or whatever, you're going to put that?
Of course, yeah, that will go towards the wetlands, and this, this plan will, like I said, will still need to go before the Conservation Commission for that kind of review.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where they review that. This, that, this board does not review that.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking because of, excuse the plans, you know, so the thing is, is, now this Griffin, why is Griffin a problem now?
Same thing, the elevation difference from Griffin down to our site, the elevation difference makes it impossible. So no, we are not extending Griffin Street.
And there's no way you can...
No.
...build up the land to do that, to do so?
No.
Because all these other businesses in the back near Griffin, they use, you know, it's access to Griffin, Save-A-Lot, I'm not sure if it's right there, Save-A-Lot?
I think there's only one business there, but...
And Save-A-Lot, and then the fence company is there as well, because a little side street, right?
Yeah, how many feet?
Yes, 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 that's where it is, yes, yes. So, the thing is, is, let me see what else, if I had anything else, but basically, the traffic issues are not going to change, you know, whether, you know, and the safety issues with the children and everything, and the emergency issues are not going to change. So that's why, basically, we all felt Evelyn's Way is not good, there's people, there are a couple of houses for sale down there, they want Evelyn's Way, why? Because they have children and there's a cul-de-sac. And they specifically came to City Hall and complained about, wanted to know what was going to be going on down there, because they wanted that cul-de-sac because the children, they don't have to worry about them in traffic, which, you have children, you're going to watch these kids every second. And we don't, we don't have older ones, we have younger ones.
I understood, and, and like I said, that cul-de-sac will stay the same way that it is, this will be a driveway, just like there's a driveway to your house. And, but what you have to keep in mind is, if this plan doesn't go through...
Oh, I know.
Then the commercial one's going to get approved.
I know.
And that's going to get built.
I know. Well, we're here just to defend our neighborhood, Evelyn's Way and the traffic and the issues.
But what you have to understand at some point is that something is going to happen there.
No, we're trying to, yeah, I understand, I understand that, we're all trying to be happy, but we want to make sure. How about, there was one other presentation before, it wasn't the one with you, the other guy, he was going to put a barrier, a barrier wall over here, over here, all along here. So it was like, like, it would set, like, because you're saying this is a, I forget what you call it, like a condo development thing, so, instead of it making this look like it's part of Evelyn's Way and it's just a continuation of Evelyn's Way, they were going to put a barrier wall up across, so it was like a private thing for, for the development or whatever he's calling it.
I don't know, I don't agree with him.
So I mean, would that, is that, is that something you could also do? I mean, on each side?
I mean, we could fence it, but we're not going to build a wall.
Yeah, they might say different...
I don't know, I don't know what, like, what, what proposal you're speaking of that talked about putting up a wall there?
Well, the first one, it got denied, they were going to, yeah.
Maybe, maybe they were going to put a fence or something.
No, it wasn't, it was like a barrier wall, they call it, and so like, you couldn't see through it or anything, and it was, this is one, which, I would like that, I mean, that would be something where you could separate, and then they, they could play, then, then it's not as much, but the only thing is, you still have traffic flow, but it's up to the neighbors or everybody deciding here today, you know?
But what you have to understand is Evelyn's Way is a public way, it's a public street. Anyone with access to it has rights to use it.
I understand, but we're just trying to make everybody happy here, so I'm just trying to say, you know, barrier might be a little bit better of a situation...
That's not for this board to determine at this point.
Well, I'm just saying, this is part of your proposal for the plan.
No, right now, what this board is looking at is very limited, and has, and they cannot put conditions on it, so they can't say, well, we're clear for fence.
No, what I'm asking you, could you possibly go back to your person and say...
No, at this time, no. At another hearing or an application, if we get to that point, potentially, but right now, it's very limited what we're here to discuss and what this board can act upon.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just trying to speak out the ideas or things from, this is round three, so, but no, thank you, I appreciate that, and anyone else who wants to...
I'm alone in that.
Yes.
What's that? That would be part of the special permit application, that the Zoning Board of Appeals could make a requirement that it gets fenced in, either with a solid fence or some type of landscape screening.
I know, she's talking about, I know he's pretty private, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Yes, come on down, give your name to the board, please.
My name is John Cavaolo, I live on 99 Evelyn's Way, right at the cul-de-sac. The only problem that I see, you can build the houses, you can build whatever back there, is still the issue coming out Evelyn's Way. My wife is very sick. Evelyn's Way right now can't even take the traffic that we got there, all right? If anybody goes by there after 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, you'd see. Everybody's got four or five. Personally, me and my son, we live across the street from each other, we own both houses at the cul-de-sac, and it's very hard to get to set the street, which is the next street off. If everybody's home, and every car's a parked, one on each side, you can't go to cars, because the street was not made for that. It's a very narrow street. Now, every, most of the times, after 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, everybody's parked up there. If you try to get in there or get out, and both at the same time, you just can't do it. You know, you have to back up all the way, or the other one has to back up, or go into somebody else's driveway if it's empty, you know? It's just, it was not made for all this traffic. By doing this, you want to add more traffic. Second thing, every year, we have a lot of problems with the so-called wetlands. Doron closed down a few years ago, and what they did, they made a big huge pond there where the wetlands run, because they're not there no more to clean, that grill, the steel grate, that was on the, you know, right? The water used to flow nicely under there. Since they closed down, they opened it bigger than this one, a pond, is what you call it. Now, every year, this is on public record, every year I have to call the city, because it's such a big thing, right? I give you another three, four weeks, it'll happen again, without, no, no rain, everything just sits there in that big pond, and if you go to water department, they were down there with fire hoses, it takes them days, the cleaner and everything, or the stuff that's on there, that animals...
The water flowing down to Bay Street?
It won't.
The water flowing down to the stream?
No, because...
Yeah, that's something else, yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah, the grill that's there now...
Yeah, I know.
Doron, yeah, Doron used to clean it every other week, you know, I mean, two, three weeks, because stuff gets built up against the grill before the water goes under the shop. Now, what they did, because they're not cleaning no more, is open up, they brought big, I guess you call it a bulldozer, they brought it in there, they opened the big huge thing, if you go by there, you're going to see, you know?
I noticed the stream's really low.
Yeah.
It's like only like this much.
Right.
It used to be, it used to move rapid, you're right.
But at the end of the stream, where the water runs under the shop, they made this huge pond, so they don't have to have nobody go there every week or every other week and clear it up. Now, if you go to the water department, you get pulled out the records, every year, it does not miss. They have to go down there with fire hoses and clean it all out, it takes them days. Now, if you're going to move, all over, water goes under the ground there, there's about 10 manholes, I don't know if you call it, it's tanks under the cul-de-sac, there's about 10 tanks stored on there. When it overflowed, they ran into, let's just call it another pond, you know, which was man-made.
That was a retirement pond.
Right, right.
Doron had that open, that was up for the kids drowning there.
Oh, I think we're, you're speaking a little bit different.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying.
Well, no, when I designed this subdivision, there is, there's an infiltration system underneath the cul-de-sac, and there's an overflow to a swale...
Yeah, but what happened...
...that comes on to our...
Yeah, but what happened first, somebody drowned.
Further down, okay.
So they put it all into those tanks, it's like underneath the ground, Doron there, I remember, because my friend drowned, you know?
My concern now is, if you take that, whatever you want to call that big hole, that was made purposely, so when the, the street shuts out, it goes into that hole, and it slowly goes into the wetlands, okay? By the time it, it goes down the, the stream, it's probably 300, 400 feet, there's no water gets to the bottom, you know? So that's not creating a problem. Now, if you're going to close that big hole, you know, redirect the water next to the, where the water runs natural, okay, you're just going to build up another bigger problem, because now you're right next to the stream, and all that water's going to overflow into the stream. I got enough runs on the bottom that I call the city every week, every year, you know? We have to see what we do before we scrub everything, you know?
If I can respond, let me respond quickly. The issue that he's talking about at Bay Street is probably 2,000 feet away and probably 100 feet in elevation difference. There is a covert that goes under Bay Street, where they just built a couple of new homes right at the bottom there, Jamie Duff actually just built them. So this, there is a, a stream that runs through all of these properties and ultimately goes under Bay Street. But that's 1,500, 2,000 feet away from this and at an elevation much higher. And all of the drainage concerns and whatever drainage improvements we need to make gets reviewed through the conservation filing, and that gets reviewed by the city engineer as well. Lastly, Evelyn's Way was not approved and designed to have on... Lastly, Evelyn's Way was not approved and designed to have on-street parking. There shouldn't be cars parked on Evelyn's Way. They're supposed to be in their driveways, two off-street parking spaces.
Just like five houses on, on the street, right?
I'm just, I'm just explaining through the chair?
Yes.
That they gave a waiver of the narrow width of that road, because that's what the developer wanted to build, and they were required to create two off-street parking spaces for each home. An option, and I'm not telling people what they need to do with their properties, but they could provide additional off-street parking on their own parcels if they chose to. But there absolutely should not be parking on both sides of Evelyn's Way. They're one hundred percent correct. The commercial development that is allowed by right would create more traffic than what's being proposed here. But again, that's not what this board is to look at. This is strictly for two-unit townhouses or five single families. And that's what you really need to look at.
What, why can't they use Griffin? Is that it?
It has nothing to do with what's before the board.
No, it's, the chair asked a question.
Yes, of course.
What, is that all we have, is two, these two items to vote on? Or do, you know, the points of the rural and the wetlands?
You want me to?
I know, I need you up.
The planning board has a very narrow focus. A vast majority of the items that they've spoken to would be subject to a special permit or the variance to the zoning Board of Appeals. Traffic, transportation, drainage, those sorts of things are Conservation and, um, Conservation and Zoning Board of Appeals. The application before you is a very, very narrow focus. Does the planning board feel that there is specific and material change? Is there a significant, is there a material change to eight multifamily units or four duplexes? Eight units with parking on the street and on the cul-de-sac? Has this plan that they are proposing, is it specifically, is it specific and materially different than what was denied? And my recommendation is that it is. The merits of that and the ultimate, whatever the merits of it and the drainage and transportation, that is unfortunate, that is for the zoning Board of Appeals and for Conservation Commission.
But does this come back to us, and they wanna build a lot, so it's?
No, because they're going to, they're not going to divide it like a traditional subdivision. That will be, remain one lot with five houses under a homeowners association. They're not gonna put traditional lot lines between it. They're gonna, they're gonna have five units on one lot with a homeowners association. Essentially, it's, it's essentially like a condo, with a single-family condo, which you don't, you very rarely, I've seen one in my twenty-three years.
I can understand your point with this and our point, but we got voted on, but the only, I, I, I really, I know that area. And these people are absolutely right about the, about the water problem and all. They ain't seen nothing like a bad rainstorm that'll wipe up maybe Jamie Duff's house. That's how high it was, and flows like the river.
The scope you have is very specific.
Well, with Conservation and the left.
That's Conservation and Zoning Board of Appeals. But the scope you have is, is this proposal materially different?
I understand.
Than what was denied?
I understand that part.
And it will actually require a site plan review as well.
Correct, it will.
So all the different agencies within the city, sewer, water, engineering, building department, there's a new bylaw within the last couple of years that, you know, is site plan review, so that will get another round of review as well.
And this takes a nine-tenths vote?
Could I, first of all, thank you all of you for coming. We, we see, we understand the concern, but we, we must speak for myself in a planning, I'm in a planning, is the ECA only to request from us an approval to go back to the zoning. So for us, and I've been here in a plan in two years, it is a substantial change from the previous plan to the new plan. The question we ask, we are concerned, and we work with Mr. Aggar, that it is. The most important thing is the safety of the children. The most important thing is the new development and ways to go into it. That is actually, we are not at that position right now to answer, who says, yes, we're gonna do it. If the development after has been approved by the engineer and so on should come in front of us for final approval, then you're gonna hear your friend Mario, if it's correct or not. So for what Mr. Aggar and the new development is here, we don't have any choice but to approve. To approve not the development, but they go in the front of the zoning. Once goes in the front of zoning, they'll determine if it's correct, then the engineer gets involved. And I'm assuming that they don't wanna hear your voice of disappointment, that they wanna be a neighbor now. And basically, I hope you forgive me, but I will make a motion through your request, a substantial change of your plan to go in the front of the zoning. Okay, the approval is the assessed lot at the G twenty-seven-one.
To prove the repetitive petition that there's a material change.
Correct.
And do we have a second? Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
So you, you're opposed? So you want us to go ahead with the commercial development?
There's, it, I think, it requires a nine, it requires a nine-tenths vote. It requires a hundred percent majority of the board. If the developer is not allowed to at least present a substantially different proposal, then the commercial proposal will go forward and does not require, it only requires Conservation, it's permitted as of right. I, I just want you to know that, if you wanted to reconsider.
Okay, the vote was three in favor, one opposed, so it did not pass.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and good luck to all of you.
So can I have a question on?
Yeah.
No, so now that it's, it's a nine, so he can come back now and do a conservation piece, right? And propose the commercial thing to a council of this?
The commercial application is what they're going to move forward now, versus having five units down there. Now you're gonna be looking at?
Wetlands and conservation issues.
Correct.
So we would be coming back for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand, that's all. No, hey, it's gonna be something, but hopefully?
You wouldn't rather have houses?
We would rather them not come to our street.
Yeah, that's all we care about, that's all we care about. I wish they could go through Griffin, because that would, what this mean, what Charles, what you're saying, I'm not kidding you, you are correct.
Okay.
This woman's got video of water in revenge.
I've seen it.
Yeah.
I've been in it. It's like, so what if it does?
Yeah.
I'd have to clean that grate, and I've seen it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Okay, we need to get on with our meeting.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Feel bad for whatever goes there. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with item number two. We have applications for endorsement of plan not believed to require approval for make plans. The first one is file number nineteen dash fourteen thirty-eight. The owner applicant is Lawrence Street Development LLC. Location, Lawrence Street. Assesses lot one dash twenty dash zero 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 two. Can I point? I'll get the next one out first, okay?
I'll just go around.
Okay, that's good.
This is, it meets zoning for, because you need five thousand square feet plus fifteen hundred square feet. It requires fifty feet of frontage. All the lots have more than fifty feet of frontage. Lawrence Street is a public way. I think you need to make a determinant, and what he realizes, across the street is the old incinerator. So what this is doing is parceling off seven parcels, uh, zone business for, and they're gonna be accessing, this Lawrence Street is essentially the, you know, what's the de facto driveway to, uh, the old incinerator and the public works facility.
And they plan on putting houses in these lots?
No, I have no idea. It's zone business, so...
For them to put houses, would they have to come back to us?
No. If, I don't know if it requires a, it's zone business, I don't know. So if it required, if they required variances or anything, they'd have to go in front of the zoning Board of Appeals. What you're looking at is, do the lots meet frontage and area requirements along a way that's paved and this is?
It does. Okay, do I have any questions from the board members?
So let me understand this, we are proving something?
The land, you're just proving the creation of the seven parcels.
And these all meet the requirement?
Yeah, fifty feet of frontage and over five thousand square feet. And they're all over, every lot's almost ten thousand, nine thousand square feet to about twelve thousand five hundred square feet.
So we are with them legally, so?
Yes.
I motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, so approved. Item number B is file number nineteen dash fourteen thirty-nine. The owner applicant is Caplock LLC. Location is three forty-one, three fifty-one, three fifty-seven, South Oxford Street. On assesses lots F dash eighteen dash eighty-three.
This is on South Oxford Street. The applicant is proposing, the existing lot is one lot with three, three families on them. They did receive a zoning Board of Appeals variance to be able to draw the property lines in between. This is, plan is in conformance with what the variance granted, therefore, I'm recommending that you endorse the plan.
Any questions?
I make a motion.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And we have C. File number nineteen dash fourteen forty. Owner applicant Alexandra Pedera. Location, two forty-four, Monica Street. Assesses lots G dash thirteen dash thirty-one.
This plan is, the applicant is utilizing the Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one L, which states that you can divide a proximal of two or more buildings that were standing prior to subdivision control law. I have, it, it meets the standard. They've put the correct notes on here, because the buildings have existed prior to subdivision control law. I will go on the record, as I've done on the last couple of these, that when an applicant wants to come for a building permit for an expansion or an upgrade, they will be required to get a variance to make it a legal conforming. This is a little quirk in state law that allows you, if you have a lot with two structures prior to subdivision control law, you can divide it. I know that, I know Mr. Aggar usually has his clients get the variance and then come, but the other engineer in this doesn't do that, and they require the notes. It complies with, especially with the note on there about Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one L, therefore, you can sign it.
So question to you, are these a two dwelling or just two lots?
Two dwellings. It's a, it's a single-family dwelling and a three family dwelling on one lot. They existed prior to subdivision control law. They're proposing to, they're proposing a, the lot line. If they wish to ever improve or do anything to their property, they will then need to go, it does not, granting this does not grant a variance to this. They will need a variance for, to make them legal conforming lots. So they're creating their own hardship, in essence. But it's under, it's allowed under the law, and I recommend that you endorse the plan because it meets the requirements of state law. It's just one section of state law I do not like.
Okay, so this become two dwelling, and we don't, not responsible for utilities, sewage, or any of that?
Nope.
You say that with a smile.
No.
Okay, if you say that, you know, under the law, this should be corrected, then we make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve, file number nineteen fourteen forty, and Alexandra Pedera, you see thirteen thirty-one?
And Charlie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And we have approval of the board's minutes of June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the meeting. At that meeting, Charlie Monas was absent, so it would be the three of us to vote on that. Do I have a motion? Yeah.
Charlie, you were here?
No.
No, he was not.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Charles Monas abstained. And public input, I think we had, at that, we got the example?
No, was there any public? No? Public input, other than?
Input. Any public input?
No.
No? Then we have adjournment. Vote to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next meeting.